This work session of the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees to order. As a reminder, the public is welcome to attend via Zoom. However, we are not taking questions or comments from the public during the work session. If you would like to address the board, there will be opportunities during our regular board meeting at six o'clock tonight. At this time, I will turn this meeting over to Dr. Brown.
Madam Chair, starting out, our first topic that we're going to talk about is a little financial update and budget update from Jett Sicorelli, our business, our finance director. So I will turn it over to Jett and share the screen and get him set up. Jett, I don't think I got you suited. There. I have your shirt on.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Brown members of the board. As Dr. Brown mentioned, I'm going to give you a brief update on a couple of different areas with regards to finance this evening. One second, let me make sure that I got in control here. I wanted to talk a little bit about the CARES Act funding. There's a lot of changes as a result of the recent legislation that was passed. We're balancing a lot of different funding pots of resources, if you will, with regards to CARES. I wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with those funding pieces. Talk a little bit about the recalibration. The impact to our budget certainly is going to be the main focus there. And then talk a little bit about where we are with some tentative figures as we start moving into the legislative session and as well as trying to meet that timeline that we talked about with the upcoming budget reductions. This is a little bit wary of a slide. I apologize if I try to keep the slide to a minimum, but there's a few areas I want to point out, some high level key points from the recent CRSA, which is what we're affectionately referring to as CARES Version Two. But as you know, Congress approved the $900 billion pandemic emergency response bill. Within that bill, there's $82 billion for K-12 schools and post-secondary institutions. This is roughly four times what was in the first iteration of the CARES Act. There are some important modifications, but overall, there are three different programs that are authorized into that new bill. The first is the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. This one's a little bit different in the sense that these funds are allocated to school districts at the governor's discretion. So the executive branch has oversight on how those funds are allocated, whether they're based on need or a certain initiative or directive from the governor's office. The second one you see there is the Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. This is ESR. Both of these, by the way, I would add, are continuations of existing resource funds that were in the first CARES Act. The second one, unlike the first one, the GEAR's Fund, is based on a formula allocation to states and school districts. So you recall when we had the first CARES appropriation, it was determined on our Title I allocation methodology. So that took into account the same calculations that outbid Title I fund. So you can imagine there are some school districts around the state that do not receive Title I funds that do not receive the same allocations under CARES I or CARES II. And the next one you'll see is just the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund that really is applicable directly to K-12 operations. I did want to point out a few things. Now, the original CARES Act had specific to ESR, 12 different areas of allowable uses. And we talked about that before when the first funding was authorized. Those broad categories still remain. There were some expansions on the allowable use of those funds. And I've highlighted here, the first is addressing learning loss among students. And this is language that comes right out of the federal legislation. It's intended to be extremely flexible, but captures a few key points on how school districts can utilize those resources. Now, I would caveat this by saying we have not received any formal rule or regulation or guidance from the U.S. Department of Education yet, nor have we through the state education agency. All of those entities will have some input on how we can utilize these funds. There has been some indication that we will have to expense the first CARES Act funding before we can access the second CARES Act. We're working through that. Ideally, we would like to see access to the second pot of funds, if you will, in that there's expanded eligible uses. So we have more flexibility on how we can utilize that second pot of funds. Continuing on with those expanded uses, you'll see here that they have allowed some use for school facility repairs and improvements to reduce the transmission of viruses or other environmental health hazards. Similarly, the number 15 you see there does allow for some inspection, testing, maintenance, and some other capital-related improvements to air quality of school facilities. The legislation even goes on to say that this could also be used for things like doors, windows, those type of things. This is a departure from the first CARES Act in that it was explicitly prohibited for any capital repair or costs associated with that grant. So this has been a lessening of some of the restrictions with regards to the CARES funding. Now, continuing on with the ESR funding, they did include some additional reporting requirements. This is probably of no surprise. All of the federal grants, as well as the state funding that we get that's categorical or restricted, require some reporting back on data elements. As a matter of fact, I think maybe I told the board at one point in time that we have over 68 different data collections that we provide to the State Department of Education. Many of them are finance in nature. But with this new access to the CARES Act Part II, we're going to be required to report through the State Department of Education, specific detailed information on how we utilize those funds. Now, the scope and the frequency of these reports is going to be kind of at the discretion of the U.S. Department of Education and the State Department of Education, but we do acknowledge that there will be some significant reporting that we anticipate as we move into that second CARES Act funding. A big one that probably warrants some discussion is the state maintenance of effort. This is nothing new to federal program funding. We've talked about this with regards to special education and Title I funds. The first CARES Act fund did have a maintenance of effort requirement, but you'll notice that most of the language is directed at the states, the state education agencies. So specifically, the state is required to maintain support in the upcoming fiscal year, at least to the proportionate levels of K-12 funding relative to all of the other overall spending. And they are able to average that out over three years. Really, what the takeaway here is that the state could cut K-12 funding as long as it's proportionate to other areas of the state's budget. There are maintenance of effort waivers that are available to the state in the sense that there's a precipitous decline in financial resources. The state could pursue a waiver with the U.S. Department of Education. Anecdotally, I have heard that a lot of the times, the waivers that were reviewed as part of the first CARES Act required that states not have a rainy day fund to access before they would grant that waiver. So it's a little bit up in the air as far as what that would look like. We did sign an assurance in the first CARES application that we would maintain effort as a school district. It's not explicitly required under the act, but it was part of the conditional requirements that we received the money from the state. I don't see or foresee any problem with the first year. That would be a measurement of '21 to fiscal year '20, so that's the year we're in now. I do wonder if they do require the district to maintain effort, how we would go about receiving a waiver or something to that extent if we are looking at $100 million reduction in state general fund allocations. And so that's kind of the key there, is there's a little bit of an unknown when it comes to what that's going to look like. And if the state doesn't receive the waiver, are we still going to be able to access those funds? Those are some big questions we're hoping to hear and get some direction on here shortly. But I do expect some with the changeovers at the federal level, it'll take a little bit of time to get some of that information. Couple of other notable miscellaneous provisions within the CARES Act or the newest version. The first is the coronavirus relief fund extension. I'll probably do a horrible job of trying to explain this, but there's a whole other set of funds that we were able to access as a school district through the governor's office. It was what we call the CRF fund, where the governor was able to allocate a portion for educational purposes from the $1.5 billion that was provided. So this was the money that we utilized for the student devices for periods when the schools were at either a Tier Two or Tier Two, Three status. That's where those resources came from. We also received some funding for food service operations to address gaps in the revenue versus the expenses during the closure for the COVID feeding, as well as some curriculum costs for Cheyenne Virtual School. And I'll give you a summary. I'll show you some of the grant allocations and where we are with expensing those here in a moment. But the good news is that we were working frantically to obligate and expense those funds by December 31st. We were doing everything within our power to make sure that there weren't issues with supply chains. We had to expense, not even have an obligation with the vendor, but we had to exchange money with vendors by December 31st. We do have an extension up to one year. What that looks like is still under review. I imagine that we'll have amendments with the governor's office on the contract and what we're required and allowed to use those funds for. But that is good news because you'll see when I go over some of the figures that we do have some unobligated funds that still exist within that grant. The next bullet point here is something that we've been talking about for a while now. This is the FF-CRA. Now, there are a couple of nuances here. We talked about extending the district's plan and trying to align as close as we could with the federal program for the coronavirus relief, obviously for COVID leave and those type of things. Now, we anticipated that there could be some change at the federal level, but for the most part, it remains the same. About point out a couple of nuances. It does not mandate that we provide extended COVID-related leave. We're obviously going to continue with what we discussed through June, but there's no longer a mandate. It's purely optional. And then it extends payroll credits for those who are eligible through March 31st. And the reason I say for those who are eligible, you remember that I pointed out that as a public government or local government, we were not eligible for tax credits, but we were able to waive the social security portion of payroll taxes on the employer side. So unfortunately, we did not see an extension to allow us to get the full credit for providing that leave. That would have been dollar for dollar. As of the December 18th payroll, we had expensed about $800,000 for COVID-related leave. As we move into the next payroll processing, we'll have more updated figures, but we don't receive that $800,000 credit towards our tax liability with the federal government. We do, at least at this point in time, believe that we will not be required to provide the social security portion of our payroll taxes on the employer's portion. And if that's the case, we'll have three more months of that savings, if you will. But then after that point, it'll be regular payroll taxes for the district to pay. I mentioned earlier, just to give you a brief summary of where we are with the CARES Act funds, you'll see that we're balancing about seven different pots of CARES grant allocations. The first is the ESR I. We received about $4.5 billion. I would tell you that there's a number of different entities that are required to be covered under that. We provide a portion of ESR funds to the two charter schools within our district. We also provide, or did provide, the opportunity for private schools to access a portion of that fund, as well as homeschools. So to date, we've expensed or encumbered about $1.7 million. We do have other obligated earmarked funds within that 4.6 million, but it's been used to support things like PPE, remote learning, summer school extended day programs. And I would point out that when we first received the funding for ESR, what we did was we approached it to address the entire duration of the grant's active lifecycle. So we knew that the grant would be live until September of '22, and not knowing where we would be with other costs, we planned around expensing that across the entire duration as opposed to front-loading all the costs that we had into the grant. We wanted to make sure that we were kind of looking at it in the long term. So the ESR II funds, we're still waiting for direction on what that final allocation will be. We did receive GEAR funds, about $83,000. We are earmarking for some of those funds for planning and coordinating COVID-19 response efforts, but we have not accessed that pot of funds yet. The GEAR II funds will be, again, at the governor's discretion on what we receive. But the next portion that I talked about earlier with the extension of a full year on the use of those funds is the governor's response funds or the CRF. The student technology funds, $11.3 million. We've expensed about $9.6 million of that total grant allocation. I can tell you that we had to work through a lot of logistics with just making sure that we had the devices. Mr. McKinney did a great job of working with what we call the integrator to make sure that the computers would work with our system, that they were fully programmed, charged, that the cases were applied. We had to work around some of the delivery issues and accepted the elementary machines without the cases only because we had to make sure that we had cut those checks and we had to take delivery. So we've had a lot of workaround on those programs. This has also helped fund the SWIVL units for classroom instruction. We're looking at how we might utilize the remaining portion of that. The two charter schools did receive a portion of that funding as well for their own technology needs. So that's a quick update on where we are with the student technology portion of the CRF. And then we also received some funding for nutrition services. I point out that we didn't request this funding, but it was kind of an auto appropriation to a number of school districts. We have used it to address some of the costs associated with the feeding programs during COVID-19. We anticipate that we'll be able to utilize some more of those resources to beat the 252,000 that we've been allocated, as well as the third bullet you see here, which is the virtual remote learning. Dr. Brown was able to work with the governor's office and get another $500,000 to help support our Cheyenne Virtual School program. And so we've been able to allocate 289,000 of that so far for curriculum-related costs and software and materials. Madam Chair, I'd probably pause right there just a little bit before I get into some recalibration to see if anybody had any questions on recalibration, excuse me, the CARES Act funds.
Yes, let's go ahead and start with Brittany.
Can you go back a slide, Jett? Madam Chair, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So had they not extended those funds or the deadlines on those funds, so of the 4.6 million or whatever, we would have only spent the 1.7?
Madam Chair, trust me, Ashby, the grants that you see on the top part of the table, the ESR and the GEAR ones, are active for the full 18 months. So we did not have to worry about the timeline on those. The ones below where you see $11.3 and $9.5 million, if they had not extended that deadline, we would have to revert the $2.00 million back to the state for redeposit back to the federal treasury.
Okay, thank you.
Kristi, if you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sicorelli, you, on the same line item, ESR I, at 4.598172, and what we've spent so far of it, the 1.7. Can, you know, my understanding is we have quite a few students that, as a result of being out last spring, have maybe fallen behind. I don't know if that's still current, but it looks like you can use this money toward remote learning, toward summer school and extended day. And I'm wondering if that can be used for personnel as well to provide tutoring or educational instruction during those times. We can beef those programs up in order to try to get these kids that may have fallen behind during last spring up to speed.
Madam Chair, trustee Clausen, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we did augment our summer school programs to provide more intensive educational opportunities using these funds. So we were able to cover the costs of the personnel that were providing, like the elementary academies that were later in the fall as a result of kind of the disruption to our summer school schedule. We are, just as a matter of fact, had conversations today on how we might utilize the next wave of ESR to meet those instructional needs. They have allowed us to do things that are specifically related to compensation for staff. As you know, there's a lot of restrictions that come into play with how we utilize those, but we are absolutely looking at how we can leverage those funds for instructional loss.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles?
Yes, thank you. Were there any funds that were requested by any private schools or any of the homeschool students?
Madam Chair, trustee Bowlen, we did not receive any private schools that responded to our inquiry on if they would like to participate in the CARES Act funding. We received four homeschool students that did reply that they would like to participate. And so we're working on developing a plan on how to use what we call the equitable services portion of that grant, where they can meet the same 15 needs that I covered earlier and how that applies to them. I would tell you that with the homeschools, it's a little bit nuanced in the sense that if there's a need for technology or something like that, the district has to maintain ownership and oversight over the devices and those type of things. So it's a little bit cumbersome on how that works. It's a little bit outside of what we've typically done. So we're working through those four homeschool families to develop a plan on utilization of those funds.
And with the charter schools, since they request the money, do they report back to us as far as how they spent those funds that we report that on? Or do they report directly back to whoever we report to?
Madam Chair, trustee Bowlen, we act as the, what we call kind of the Coguson Agency or the pass-through the fiscal entity. So the two charter schools report to us. In a sense, as long as they meet the requirements of the statute, we do provide reimbursement to them and we report back to the State Department of Education, which in turn reports back to the federal government. So that adds another layer, but they are accountable to us as the school district.
Well, their funds they have to expend already, and then we just reimburse them, is that how it works?
Madam Chair, trustee Bowlen, that's correct. Just as we have to expense the costs associated with this grant cash flow and then ask the State Department for education for reimbursement, the same thing happens with the charter schools. They, we in a sense are acting as the State Department of Education, where they submit the reimbursement request to us. They've already expensed it, and we draw it from the state and then pay them.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? You can continue.
All right, Madam Chair, just a couple of points I'd like to bring up with regards to recalibration. As we've talked about in the past, the recalibration committee moved forward a draft bill that does a number of things. Certainly, the biggest one is the $100 million reduction in statewide funding that has been mentioned and discussed quite frequently over the last few weeks. But I wanted to talk about a couple of things. In particular, there are not only the reductions to the statewide block grant funding, but there's also some minor things, maybe more of a formatting nature, but it codifies, was previously uncodified funding mechanisms in our state finance system. So that had always been operationalized through what we call an attachment to legislature or through actual statute. This brings all of those mechanics of the funding model into the text of our statutes. Everything on how we allocate resources for teachers and supplies and materials, people support personnel. So you can imagine that when you look at this bill, there's many, many, many pages, but a lot of that is just bringing that attachment into the codified version of statute. Now, there's also some key points that Dr. Brown has talked about with the committee before is the additional sales and use tax, or at least the authority. Now, a couple of key points with regards to that is the language, at least at this point in time, states that additional sales and use tax could be levied if amount is determined and necessary to fulfill constitutional requirements. Essentially, what this means is that nothing's effective until an enactment of another law specifying the amount of tax necessary. So I'm certainly not an attorney. There's a lot, well, more versed people that would be able to address that, but it doesn't automatically kick in with additional sales and use tax. There'll be a requirement to determine what the amount is to fulfill the constitutional requirements and then some other type of legislative action to actually bring that tax into the system. There's also the point that we've talked about before that the previous legislative reductions to K-12 funding and the impact of the model input still remain. I spoke about this before, and I promise I'm trying not to revisit a lot of our conversations, but really what this means is when we're talking about the $100 million reduction in funding, this doesn't take into account the additional costs or reduction in revenue from previous legislative action. And I'll talk a little bit about that when we get to the slide. The main nuance that we're addressing here with regards to the $100 million is not only that there's not a sunset date associated with that, that is permanent in nature, at least if it's passed as currently written, but we also have more than $100 million in reductions likely as a result of the upcoming fiscal year. And to give you a little bit of an idea of how that works, what I've done here is shown a couple of different things. The first is you'll see the funding model allocation in a couple of different iterations. So the first box you see is the statewide total. And so this is statewide funding. Currently, under the current fiscal year, the state is funding a block grant model of about $1.5 billion. Now, when we look at that, when you move to the right on the table, you'll see that Laramie School District One's share of that $1.5 billion is $213.9 million. So I'm going to give you information with regards to the statewide total and then our district's total as well, so you can kind of see what that means for us as a whole. Now, the current legislative model, as it compares to a couple of different scenarios that were discussed with the recalibration committee, addressed a couple of things. What they call the EB or evidence-based model. The first, I guess, iteration that was discussed was a model that would adopt a new regional cost adjustment methodology as well as provide salaries that are in the 75th percentile compared to comparable professions in Wyoming. Now, the 75th percentile is synonymous with what the model provides for salary as opposed to what is actually paid or what the market requires in school districts. So when you think of the 75th percentile and the comparability, and again, I'm not an economist, but the way I would describe this is that if an accountant makes, let's say, 106% of what the average salary would be compared to the nation as a whole, or even when you look at it from district to district, then you would expect a teacher or comparable profession would have the same 6% differential. So the 75th percentile adjusts for things like the duration of the contract year for teachers, those type of things. Now, they also talked about a couple of other things, which is the 85th percentile, which is more reflective of where we actually compensate staff. That's really what the market has required for funding in the sense that we pay more than what the model provides. And we've talked about the ECAs and how they haven't been applied and some of the nuances that come with how that amount is calculated. The key point being that that salary that's in the current legislative model was originally developed in 2005, '06. Now, when you compare that to the current legislative funding, you would see that, I'm going to say, the cheapest version of an evidence-based model provides $20.9 million more on the statewide level and about $3.5 million more for our district as a comparison. Now, I mentioned the 85th percentile, which again is more reflective of actual market conditions. The same criteria, the evidence-based model has different class sizes, different allocations for people's support positions. There's different components that are funded differently, but it does, in this scenario, reflect the new RCA and salaries at the 85th percentile. That would provide $96.9 million more for the state as a whole and $15.1 million for our district. And that's even with larger class sizes and a lot of different components that the model in the evidence-based research is different from the legislative model that we're currently funded under. Now, the committee also looked at what would the evidence-based model provide if it relied on the current regional cost adjustment, again, at the 75th and the 85th percentile, even utilizing the RCA, which is one of the more expensive components, if you will, from the evidence-based model versus the legislative model. The model would generate about $45.7 million more. And then for our district, it's back to 35, or excuse me, $3.5 million. The reason being is that under either scenario, our district receives the same regional cost adjustment, whether it's under the old adjustment or the new, we receive the same adjustment. So you'll see that these numbers are going to look a little bit similar for us. There's other districts across the state have very different figures. As a matter of fact, Dr. Brown's talked about Natrona. There's shared in school districts, there's a number of them that are heavily impacted by that regional cost adjustment. Teton is probably the biggest example. But when you look at salaries at the 85th percentile using the old RCA, our district, again, would receive $15.1 million more. So those are the four different areas that they looked at, the evidence-based research to determine the funding model amount. And I wanted to talk about how that looks with And I wanted to talk about how that looks with regards to the hundred million dollars that actually is moving forward in that draft bill. So if we use the same year with the same reduction of a hundred million dollars, what that would mean for our district is the roughly fifteen million dollar decrease. And it's a little bit more than what you see in some of the Legislative Service publications, only because I'm looking at the current year, so we can have an apples-to-apples comparison. So that would generate about a hundred and ninety-eight million dollars for our district, which is, I think the last time our district was under two hundred million dollars was two thousand fifteen and a similar student count or ADM count, if you will. So you can imagine that a lot changes in five or six years. Fifteen million dollars is pretty significant in the grand scheme of things on how that might look. Now, if you look at that compared to the evidence-based model, you could take that twenty million dollars that I talked about earlier when you looked at quote-unquote the cheapest model. That's about a hundred and twenty million dollar difference between the evidence-based model and where we're funding. For our district, that would be about eighteen and a half million. So if the evidence-based model is the true cost of education, we would be about eighteen point five million dollars below that mark. Now, a couple of things that are worthy of mentioning here as well is how this impacts where we are with our reserves. And as a board, we've worked with you to make sure that we have the resources that we need to navigate the decrease in funding. But what this would do is by lowering our funding model guarantee or the actual amount that we get from the state, it also reduces the amount that we can save. So that fifteen percent cap kicks in. So to give you an example, the maximum reserve level that we can have is about thirty-two million dollars. With the reduction, that moves our maximum cap down to twenty-nine point eight. So in a sense, that fifteen million dollar reduction also means that we can save or we can't save two point three million dollars that we would have under the previous funding allocation. So that alone presents some challenges as we move forward as well. Madam Chair, I was going to give you some ballpark figures with regards to where we were with our budget reduction initiative and the planning moving forward. And just as a quick reminder to the board, we talked about approaching it in three different tiered structures. The first tier is the level of reductions that we would operationalize regardless of any of the reduction scenarios. So this is the basic, where we're starting, the standard budget, if you will. The second tier was additional programs that we would incur only if there's certain levels of revenue reduction were impacting the district. So we'll talk about what those percentages look like. And to structure that, the tier one that we're working off currently is the seven percent, which is roughly the hundred million dollar reduction. The tier two would be a ten percent reduction and a tier three would be a thirteen percent reduction. And on the tier three, those are the last measure reductions, if you will. If there's a thirteen percent or more cut, those are the programs that we would build into our budget proposal so that you have kind of a clear picture of this is where we are with the standard budget. This is what happens if we hit a ten percent reduction and this is what we hit as a thirteen percent. We still don't have clarity on where those exact numbers are, but we're going to be able to be flexible enough to address where the legislature ultimately ends with some of the revenue reductions. And to give these, I wanted to go over a few different high-level figures. And these are all very subject to change. This is just as of where we are, working through the budget process, but I've structured the reductions here in three different columns. It moves from the highest reduction, tier three, down to a tier one. Again, there's the thirteen, ten, and seven percent decreases. So when we're trying to identify what the target shortfall is, we have to take into account first what we know will increase as far as expenses. So this is what I talked about as far as the things that we know will happen with health insurance, the cost of utilities, the advancement or changes in salary schedules, those type of things. We know that that cost is roughly four point seven million dollars. The model endpoints or inputs are the changes in ADM and education experience, the health insurance, the changes from last session. This is a pretty conservative estimate, about two point nine three million dollars in revenue reductions if nothing happens with the legislature. And then when we factor in the upcoming year and what the revenue impact might look like, we range from anywhere from twenty-seven point six on a thirteen percent reduction to fourteen point nine. It's a little bit different than the slide I went over earlier because it's forward-facing. We know that the ADM counts are down and we know that the proportion of our district to the state as a whole is going to vary from year to year. So our reduction could look a little bit different. That's why it's not a little over fifteen million. It's just from the variability on our student counts as comparison to the state as a whole. So the total shortfall that we're working with right now and addressing budget plans around are ranging from anywhere from thirty, thirty-five point two million down to the twenty-two point five million. And I would tell you again that that seven percent is the standard budget that we're working a budget plan around. Now, that's the revenue side. To talk a little bit about what that looks like on the expense side. And again, this is, this is an important point to bring up is that this is general fund only. I just talked about the additional funding for CARES Act and all those other pieces. There's always going to be interactions, variances on how we can and can't use those funds. We're definitely looking at every opportunity we can to help alleviate some of the pressure on our general fund to get those federal funds. But keep in mind, a lot of those federal funds are designed to not allow us to have any flexibility of bringing those into our general operations. There's some, some changes with the interpretation of the CARES Act that we're hoping to leverage that'll help us a little bit, but we still have to move forward with how we're going to be funded through the state government. And so the same reductions apply here. We're working some proposals around department budgets where you're being reduced anywhere from six point three on the high end down to four point seven million dollars. And again, those are all the departments that you see when we go through the budget book that are, you know, everything from facilities to instruction to all the department-level budgets that we have at the district office that we administer through different budget officers. We also have the school-level budgets. This can range anywhere, currently from two point two million dollar reduction to about five hundred and sixty thousand. Again, these are very tentative and subject to change. And then the personnel side, representing anywhere from twenty-six point seven to seventeen point two million dollars in reductions. And this is the one that we spend considerably more time on, as you can imagine, the non-personnel versus the personnel side. There's a number of different aspects that we have to consider when we're approaching this. This is really, again, just a targeted amount. And then all the details of how we're going to support that initiative are going to be presented to you as we move through the reduction process. Now, the total ranges from thirty-five point two down to twenty-two and a half. And you'll recall in December, when I addressed the committee, the twenty-eight and a half was where we were starting with the standard, with the baseline adjustment. So with the most recent bill, we felt comfortable using that as the baseline going forward, knowing that there could be potential for additional cuts, additional reductions that could exceed the seven percent. But that's how we're going to structure it going forward for now. Madam Chair, I was going to talk a little bit about kind of an update to our timeline and where we are. I kind of created this slide before information from the legislature was provided today. And I think Dr. Brown's probably going to go over a little bit of that update, knowing we are recession starting tomorrow and then the opportunity for some, some virtual sessions. I think the key takeaway here is that statutorily, we still have deadlines to meet with the board. We still have to present you with the preliminary budget in May. There's nothing that's going to change that. So we're still working forward with developing those three different draft versions of a budget. I've kind of explained this is we're effectively creating three different budgets within the same fiscal year. And so that's kind of the work that's going on behind the scenes to make this all work. Now, with the changes of the legislative dates, we're hopeful that we might have some absolution with where we are with those bills. Certainly, we're not excited to have budget reductions, but for us to be able to move forward, we have to have an idea where we are, especially with the contracts for teachers to be left and all these other pieces that come into play with this timeline. There's a lot of moving pieces. We're hopeful that some of these committee bills will be addressed and we'll have opportunity, again, to testify and provide some input to the legislative committees on how these even seven percent reductions impact us and hopefully advocate for some lesser reductions as we move forward. Madam Chair, I'm happy to address any questions, get into some details and provide any information that the board might want.
Madam Chair, thank you. Jed, could we look at recalibration slide real quick? Yeah, so I guess the one, the one that I'm, I think I understand it, but I understand there is, I'm looking at the third sub-bullet there, the one that provides additional sales and use tax amounts. So I'm assuming there is no bill currently. Is that, is that correct?
Madam Chair, trustee, we respond, there is a bill. The recalibration bill captures both the hundred million dollar reduction and the possibility of additional sales and use taxes. But it does require further legislation to actually enact that sales and use tax.
Okay, so when they talk about the amounts that are necessary to fill the constitutional requirements. So are they talking about the issue of educational equity across the state? Are they talking about the basket of goods that we have to, we have to provide? Or both? How's that? What is the issue?
I believe in the, within the context of the school finance bill, they're addressing the basket of goods. What is the cost necessary to support the basket of goods, the constitutional requirements associated around school finance?
Madam Chair, if I could just, so the, so there is a to-be-determined amount regarding sales and use tax, correct?
Madam Chair, just to reach the, correct.
Go ahead. So is that correct? There's a to-be-determined amount?
Correct, exactly. Certainly, the revenue side is just as varying as where we are with the expenditure side. The tax that may, you know, hypothetically need to be passed in order to cover the school foundation deficit could be different if, you know, there's rebounds in, in certain aspects of coal or oil or assess valuation, those type of things. So it is very flexible, correct?
So now with the sale and sales and use tax that they would, they would impose, would that apply to the state as a whole? Or would that be determined by individual school districts?
Madam Chair, trustee, we respond, that would not be discretionary for the school districts as currently written. So it would be levied at the statewide level.
And who makes that determination? The state, the Department of Education, or the governor's office, or who does it?
Madam Chair, trustee, we respond, that would require the legislature to determine what that tax is or necessary. And that's why they have that language in there that's not effective until the enactment of a law. So that would be discretionary based on the legislative action.
So apparently they feel comfortable at some point making a determination as to how much money is going to have to be raised in order for us to provide the basket of goods that they've identified. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, trustee, we respond, the way I would characterize it is it, it, it allows the legislature to address kind of a moving target. If the deficit is three hundred million dollars a biennium versus a hundred million dollars a biennium, that sales and use tax rate might be significantly different. So it allows them the flexibility to adjust that rate based on kind of the profile of the school foundation program at the time.
Okay, my last question, Madam Chair, if I could. So I guess my understanding is that's the only revenue enhancement process or element that they've identified so far is adjusting the sales and use tax revenue?
Madam Chair, trustee, we respond, that is correct. That's the only revenue enhancement that's been discussed so far. Or presented to move forward, I should say.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Trustee Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So just to sort of clarify that there's still a lot we don't know that has not been determined yet. And that would be the model. And I guess, what is the intersection between this recalibration piece, which has a lot of unknowns in that as well, and the model itself? How do we, where do we go without having both pieces in place?
Madam Chair, trustee Herman, that's, that's the one point five billion dollar question. Without a clear direction on where the legislature will end and where the model intersects with the current recalibration bill, I would tell you that the strongest course of action and what my recommendation is, is to continue with the tiered structures approaches that we have. If by some fortunate event, we incur less than a seven percent reduction, that'll give us the opportunity to adjust. I think really with the unknowns that you mentioned, we're not going to really have a clear idea until we not only get final direction from the legislature on what laws will be changed, but changed, but also where we are with the federal program funding, all the other pieces that come into play. So it's a little bit of a hurry-up-and-wait game, but we don't have the luxury of waiting. And so that's why, when you talk about that intersection, that's what, that's what's really requiring most of our time is to go through these what-if scenarios and make sure that we have a contingency to address each one of those.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you. Thank you, Jed, very much. That was very, very good and very helpful. Can I take one moment?
Absolutely.
I'm going to remind, since everybody wasn't sitting at the podium, I'm going to remind him of the mute button that's right up here by your mic. If you hit that, then that'll take care of some of the background noise. It's right up here by you. It's a little toggle. If you hit that, then that'll take care of some of the background feedback. Thank you. And then obviously unmute it when you're ready to speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have Dave Barton. Can I talk a little bit about some of the things that may change as we move forward with with the School Facilities Commission, so? Mr. Barton, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, so just wanted to give you a little, little update. As, as most of you are aware, when we are looking at capital construction, that's based on what we call the needs index. And typically, the old process of how we would prioritize projects is we would, they would look at capacity and then they would look at condition and those would be the two driving factors in how we, we would get a building pushed up to the list and finally get it funded through the legislature. The past seven years, the state has used a district-wide capacity calculation in this process, which for Laramie One, while we weren't happy about it, we, we worked with them because we were over a hundred percent capacity, so we were receiving capacity schools. You know, the tricky part with that is sometimes if you've got a neighborhood school that's overcrowded and you're looking at district-wide average, we may have two neighbors clear across town. And so then, of course, as you know, we have to pick or choose where we're going to put that school. So you don't always get to have the full remedy. So I would, would point out, though, that they have, if you're over a hundred percent, you hit the needs index for capacity and then condition is its own separate list. And as you're aware, we have twelve schools in the top twenty in the high priority in the condition list. But they've actually not addressed a conditioned school or replaced a conditioned school in the last two bienniums. So over the past, I'd say, eighteen months, Laramie One, Teton, Carbon Two, and Campbell County have been working with the state on, on a governmenting documents committee. And we've been allowed to give input to kind of help try and address some of the issues. And probably one of the biggest issues that many of you have heard me talk to you about over the past few years is, is the question of educational suitability. So we may have buildings that are overcrowded or they may be at capacity. We have some that are in great condition, but they may not actually be suitable to address the educational needs in today's world. And so the way we would get educational suitability addressed is through the remedy process. If we had a conditioned school and we were doing a renovation or replacement, then we could address the educational suitability. So the chart that I have put up here, and I've given you each a little clear copy at your table, is kind of a compilation of what they're looking at potentially for the new process. So what they would like to do is consolidate the three scores. You know, we were tickled, number one, that they are going to look at educational suitability. In the past, educational suitability would look at illumination, which is just the quality of lighting in the classroom. They would look at technology readiness and that IAQ would be indoor air quality. Now, we think of indoor air quality as does it, is have the ability to heat or cool depending upon the season. And their, their function actually is, are we able to move air? So in August, if you can open windows and turn a fan on, then that rate's okay. But one of the things that they did not have a score on would be the appropriateness of student environment. And so we've spent probably about a part of a year helping them develop an instrument. And so that work will go forward and they will be scoring that. So now, the educational suitability will be a combination of illumination, tech readiness, indoor air quality, and appropriateness of educational space. And that appropriateness of educational space is actually going to be fifty-one percent of that overall educational suitability score. So that, that's something that the school district really pushed hard for. I think that will help. Where we get into our concerns is if you take those four dark circles and you move up, that's your ad suitability. We're going to add ad suitability and the facility condition and combine those scores to come up with a condition score. and combine those scores to come up with the condition score. So with that, your, your appropriateness of space, even though it's half of the suitability score, as it, as it moves up, it's only going to be about 25% of the overall condition score, so it does kind of blend it and, and bury it a little bit, but I think we can, we can work with that. Probably the most concerning thing right now is they're considering combining condition capacity and educational adequacy into one score, which would give them a remediation schedule. Now, our concerns here lie in that they want to use a district-wide average. And what I would tell you is if you looked at our individual buildings, we have about, somewhere in the range of 12 to 14 schools that are at or above 100% capacity, but when you look at district-wide average, because we've opened schools like Metalark and Prairie Wind, and we've added over 1,000 seats, that has a tendency to lower our district-wide capacity. So if that, if that capacity score is one-third of the score, then our older buildings that are in poor condition and, and are not educationally suitable or adequate, that's, it's just gonna get buried. And so during the process, and, and they, we are still through the development process, but, but I did want to make sure you were aware, we are either, we have proposed one of two remedies to this. One is, we use the building condition score, the building ed suitability score, and the building capacity score, because then we're combining three like scores of us, one site. They would then list all 400 sites in the dis, in the state, and then they could go through and develop a remedy from that. Now, there's statute in there that says you must first consider non-construction alternatives. So for us, we've said if we have two districts that are adjoining, and one comes up on the list, sure, we can look to reboundry, but if you look at Laramie One as a whole, would we want to reboundry every year, or every, every biennium? And, and those of you who've been here through boundary changes, you know that's kind of painful, and we don't want to do that. The second alternative or remedy that we proposed was that we keep capacity over here by itself, and we find a way to do the condition and suitability and capacity as two separate lists. I'm not sure that that necessarily is, is going to work, because that's what we have now, and that's why we have 12 schools in the top 20. But I can tell you that if they were to look at district-wide capacity statewide, they will not have one project rise to the need of a remedy. So there, there's kind of some numbers of things going on here. Currently, as I said, we're, we're working through the processes with this committee, and when they're done, we will share it out to the districts, and then they will have to go through the rulemaking process, which at that point in time, I've talked to Dr. Brown, and we will get in front of all of the superintendents across the state, kind of let them know the pros and the cons of this. But the reality is, if you're not a school that's dealing with capacity issues, you may not even be aware some of this works going on, because in a small district, you know, if you've got an elementary, junior high, and a high school, and you've gotten two new buildings, you may be done in the facility realm for 50 years, where, you know, we, we've still got a few buildings. So we're, we're very aware, and, you know, we kind of take it upon ourselves to make sure the other districts are up to speed. So I just wanted to make sure you were aware that, one thing's for certain, they will re-score the condition of all of our buildings statewide, all over, over 400 of them this upcoming year. So that will cause that remedy list to shuffle, regardless whether they stay with the old method or the new, and we expect that. I mean, our schools can move three, four, five slots when they do that, depending upon how they deteriorate compared to others. But if they combine the three and they put capacity in there, I, I think we may have to look at, you know, some other alternatives, and I'm not sure what that would be, but we will not have, as it stands, in today's capacity numbers, we won't have a, a school rise to the, the level of remedy. So, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we've got a limited amount of time, so please make them quick, and I'll start with trustee Ashby.
Madam Chair, I, I think I just didn't hear, what is educational adequacy?
So yes, they have, so they, they kind of inter, use two different terms. So educational suitability is the, the building's ability to teach, help, support, instruction. Adequacy maybe, is it adequate space, do you have adequate power? So the two get, get blended a little bit, but by, by the way the statute reads, they will use, they will have adequacy, and they have a set of adequacy standards that they use, and they score the buildings by, so that will be part of that, that score. But suitability gets rolled up under condition.
Good.
Clear as mud, I know.
Trustee Claussen.
Thank you, madam chair, just a quick question about capacity and that issue that you're raising. Does that mean if you have one seat available, you're, you've got, you know, you have plenty, or, how do I word this, if you have one seat available in an old school, is that going to keep you from consideration, or do they look at how many, how much availability you have in your school?
Sure, trustee Claussen, great question. What I would tell you is, they look at your trailing and leading indicator data, so they will look at enrollment, if we're on an upward trend, they will actually project out five years to determine where, where we are. The issue is if you're in a time of declining enrollment, then of course, that pushes that decline out five years. And there is a, a way that we can go and present the most current data, which we, we do quite frequently, because we get these little, kind of mini up and down trends. And my biggest concern right now, when we talk capacity, is of course, we've got several hundred kids in, in virtual. So we're hoping that they do not take 2021's enrollment data and, and apply that, because it's just such a large anomaly. But what I would tell you is, if I have a, a school that has five modulators, and two miles down the road, I have a school that has, maybe they're averaging five kids in a classroom under, under capacity, those would be average, and so that school with the modules would not elevate to the, the height of a need.
My question is, you said that we probably don't have anything for coming up for capacity, so that means our numbers have changed enough in our district that even though we are planning money right now for another basic school, that's not likely to come up?
Um, well, we, Mr. Boll, we are continuing to do the, the, the design on that, and it will go out for bid, and we're hoping they will allow us to exercise that, that contract, because when that project was funded, we were over capacity at the time. I mean, in that part of town, as, as you're all well aware, we, all of those elementars are either at or, or above capacity. Where we've experienced some decline is in, in the avenues and whatnot, many of our homes have been converted to businesses, and we have seen a, a decline in numbers in those areas. And so, as, as I've, I've tried to point out, is if you look at Laramie One geographically, we're, we're 13 miles by 11 miles of, of urban residency. And to average all of us, but then to look at Goshen County, where from Torrington to Lingle is 10 miles, they actually treat those as two separate towns. And so we, we do feel like, if, if you're going to do this district-wide average, you know, we feel like it forces us to bus. Because if I'm over capacity right now, the way the rules read in a particular school, they won't even fund a modular if the district average is under 100%. So therefore, I have to bus to the next open available place. And, and so, as, as I said, we're working with this committee, you know, we've managed to get some, them to hear certain points that have helped us, and I'm not really sure where our capacity will come out, because we just had a group of folks walk every classroom in the entire district last summer to verify what the usage is, and that room usage will have a huge impact on where we come out with capacity. And, and we believe, by our numbers, we are K-12, about 800 students over capacity. Keep in mind, K-12, the high schools, we know that we've got three additions planned, if we can determine that we're over capacity. But where we get in trouble at the secondary is our junior highs, because they were nine, or seven, nine buildings. They show as only being at about 67% capacity. So again, when they average everything, it does skew the data.
Thank you. Actually, we're out of time, Tim, can you follow back up with Mr. Bartlett? Thank you so much, Mr. Bartlett, I appreciate your presentation, and we are like, right at the one minute almost from the six o'clock hour, so that will adjourn our, conclude our business for the work session. And we are like, right there, so should we do the, yeah, can you, just one sec. Okay? Go ahead.
We got, I have just about a minute left. Yeah, yeah. So anybody out there, we're gonna take just a quick bathroom break for board members, and then we'll be right back.
It's six o'clock, and I will call the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees Board meeting to order, January 11, 2021. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
.............................................
Thank you, Dr. Brown, welcome everyone. Dr. Brown, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I do not have any adjustments to the agenda tonight.
Trustee, we respond.
Madam Chair, I need to adopt the agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and it is recognition of staff and students and for outstanding achievements. So if I could have Principal Phil Thompson from South High School come up and talk about, or is he online? Phil here?
I am online.
All right, hi, Principal Thompson, and, and talk about our, your student, Aaron, Joe, I'm gonna say it right, Joe Jonas, Joe?
Jonas, yes.
Jonas, thank you.
I hope Aaron's online, she's very shy, and I had to really prod her to get on.
I see her.
But Aaron is, great, Aaron builds rapport, she's just the most genuine student you'd ever want, she makes people around her feel good. In addition to being a great student who excels in her honors classes, AP, and college classes, Aaron has been involved in band, drama, and speech and debate. Each December, she volunteers with Christmas Operation and holds a steady part-time job year-round. On a personal level, no obstacle or challenge is too big for Aaron. She recognizes all our values of honorable, enthusiastic, responsible, and determined. We love that we get to recognize students like Aaron, thank you.
Very good, Aaron, would you like to say a few words and congratulations?
Aaron, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm so sorry about that, we were having some technical difficulties with the Zoom app.
You're doing great, go ahead, we'd love to hear from you.
All right, what was the last thing that was said, I totally didn't hear any of it.
No, you're fine, we were all bragging about you, so we're just curious if you'd like to say a few words about South High School, and possibly some of your activities and your future plans, since you're a senior, and, and we're excited to hear all about you.
Um, I think my experience at South has been a very big mix of things, but it's definitely been the best high school experience I could ask for. I've met a lot of really great people, and I've definitely had a lot of really good connections with teachers that I didn't think I could find during school, so it was really great. My future plans are to go to CSU, and I think I want to study philosophy, I don't quite know yet.
That's, that's a, that's a good start, and a great school. So your school district and, and your school, we're all very, very proud of you. Could everyone give her a big round of applause, please?
Aw, thank you.
Thank you, and we'd also like to congratulate your parents, so thank you so much for being an active part of South High School and a part of our district, and we wish you the best.
Aw, thank you again.
All right, um, we have Cody Sheets as our student of the week for Cary Junior High. Could I have Principal Derek Nissen come up and talk to us about Cody? I have a certificate here for you, Principal Nissen, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it is with a great deal of pleasure that I get the chance to bring before you Cody Sheets. So he is in football and basketball, and in between those seasons, he goes out of his way to make sure he's still involved at Cary through our access program, our Bayblade Club, our Bayblade Club, and our GSA group as well. So he is so actively involved and still keeps straight A's, but interestingly enough, that's not why he was nominated or brought forward. What if he was brought forward and proposed and nominated for this award was because he is respectful and helpful to adults, always willing and volunteers to work with any student in class? And not only that, the teachers see that he brings out the best in other people's, other people, and at the same time represents what's in the best of our society. So it's my pleasure to present Cody Sheets for your selection.
Very good, thank you. Do we have Cody on the line, if you'd like to say a few words? Cody, Cody, good, welcome.
Hello.
Hi. How are you, how are you, and are you excited to be here today?
Um, yes, and I am excited to be here today.
Good, can you tell us a little bit about yourself? What's your favorite organization, or your favorite thing about Cary Junior High, Cody?
Um, my favorite thing about Cary- Um, my favorite thing about Cary Junior High is meeting all the people that work there and all the other students.
Very good. Well, it sounds like you're a very busy guy and we're incredibly proud of you, your district, your community, your school. So congratulations and congratulations to your parents. Could I have everyone give her a big round of applause, please? Thank you. So Cody and Erin, you both will be receiving some gift cards as well as your certificate from your principals. Could I have Mary Kloss talk a little bit about that? Good, Mary on?
Mary on.
Madam Chair, sorry, I was on mute. Members of the board, I am just pleased to be able to announce that we have a sponsor for those certificates. Western Vista Credit Union and our representative this evening to discuss that is Erin Espinoza. And I believe I saw Erin on the line.
Very good. Welcome, Erin.
Thank you so much. As she stated, my name is Erin Espinoza and I am a Financial Service Officer at Western Vista Credit Union. Western Vista Credit Union is honored to support the school district's Student of the Week program once again this year. Each week, we are delighted to learn about the amazing kids we have in Laramie County. In recognition of their efforts put forth by the Student of the Week, we are proud to present a Certificate of Achievement and $25 Visa Gift Card to the recipients. We congratulate you on this honor and wish you nothing but success in the future.
Very good. Thank you so much and thanks, Western Vista, for your support. If everybody could give one more round of applause for everyone. Thank you so much. Very good. We also have the honor, I'd like to have Mr. George, the principal of Central High School.
He's online.
Okay, I guess I need to look out the audience. Hello, Mr. George. We have a Certificate of Accomplishment for Nick Lamp and we'll let you tell everyone a little bit more about that and it's quite an honor, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. Dr. Brown, yes, I'm quite honored to recognize Mr. Lamp as our Wyoming Association of Secondary School Principals Assistant Principal of the Year. I've had the pleasure of working alongside Mr. Lamp for the past five years and during this time I found him to be energetic and intelligent and he always has a smile on his face. He's taken many leadership roles at Central High, including overseeing all athletics and activities, organizing the administration of state testing, serving as our school safety chairman, developing our master schedule. Mr. Lamp is well-liked and respected by colleagues, parents, and students. He is predictably positive and upbeat. And Mr. Lamp is someone students feel comfortable speaking with and parents can count on him as a valuable resource. And finally, he's both humble and even tempered. And while Mr. Lamp is not often late, if he is, it's because he stopped to help somebody. Although, to be honest, he can also be found at the pastry section at the Maverick quite often. So hats off to Mr. Lamp and we just really appreciate him.
Very good. Mr. Lamp, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, yes, thank you so much. I'm very humbled by this award and, and you know, as, as everybody knows who's on an administrative team, it takes a team effort to make it through the, to make it through the day in the school year, especially with all the challenges that we're currently faced. And I would definitely say this war, this award is just as much my, my team, my administrative team in Central High School's award as it is mine. And I'm just very humbled and honored that I was selected this year and just hope that I can live up to the, to the award itself. And so thank you so much.
Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Lamp. Could we go ahead and give him a hand for? And Central's very lucky to have you, so I know you've got a great team out there and, and congratulations. We're very excited for you and for this district. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is items from visitors. Do we have any hands raised? This is your opportunity to address the board.
If you would like to speak, all you have to do is go down to the bottom part of your screen and raise your hand and we'll allow you to speak.
Very good. All right.
We do have one.
We do, we do have one, Mr. Wilson. I would just ask that you introduce yourself and that you keep your comments to two to three minutes and please keep your comments general in nature. And please do not be redundant on your remarks. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you for hosting this and making it open. Am I coming through my audio?
Yes, you are.
Great. I'm been participating on Policy Subcommittee Three and I'm here tonight to hear the presentation from the, the diversity part of the agenda. So thank you for making this available to us despite the difficulties that COVID is giving us to not be present in person.
Thank you and thank you for participating on that Subcommittee. Are there any other hands, Dr. Brown?
Madam Chair, I did not see any other hands.
Okay, very good. There will be a second opportunity if someone decides later on that they would like to speak or address the board. It happens a little later on in our agenda. At this time, we'll announce upcoming meetings. We have a January 13, 2021, at 5:30, we have a Policy Advisory Committee Meeting Two, which is virtual. On January 25, 2021, from 4 to 5 p.m., we have Policy Advisory Subcommittee One, boardroom and virtual.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
That one may be canceled. We, we're gonna send out all of our information that we've changed and if everybody's in agreement, we will probably cancel that meeting.
All right, very good. I'm sure that he will keep everyone notified. January 25, 2021, from 6 to 7:30 p.m., Policy Advisory Subcommittee Three in the Admin 152. It is virtual as well. January 27, 2021, 9 a.m. is the review of the superintendent applications with the Wyoming School Boards Association. And I believe that's scheduled until 2 and.
And that, that will be an executive session.
That will be an executive session. Um, we also have February 1, 2021, at 5 p.m., work session, 6 p.m. regular board meeting in the boardroom. It is virtual for the public and in-person for LCSD One trustee and staff. Moving on to our agenda, it's now time for individual communications from the board and board reports. Do I have anyone? Trustee Herman?
Thank you, Herman. Just to mention that, if you haven't had a chance to go look at the literacy materials, wit and wisdom that the district has put out for public comment, anticipating a vote shortly on adoption of them, it's, I would say, I just stopped up there last week and looked them over and I was very impressed with the variety of materials that were for the students, but also that, you know, in kindergarten, they were writing responses in, in, by hand. And so it puts, it puts a kid on a trajectory and, you know, this literacy has been stated by the board as a priority. And I would say these materials, believe me, they don't phone it in and it covers a variety of situations, of exercises, of techniques. But also, we've heard a lot about learning to read, reading to learn. And as you get up in the grades, I mean, even starting with second grade, the information is very dense text and very heavy on information and heavy is going off the word. I used to actually, it's very enhanced with information. And so, and I talked with Dr. Rebein, our language arts coordinator, about the materials are crosswalk to many different disciplines, to social studies and, and it really is, and science and, well, probably less science, but the children who read that material are going to learn an awful lot. It's going to enhance their work in every subject area. So I really think, I mean, if you want to go up, they're in the hallway, outside room 210, take a look at it. But I was very, very impressed. I think the screening committee that worked on it did an excellent job at getting materials. And again, I talked to Dr. Rebein about how people complain about, you know, we're with the latest fad and fashion and everyone has to relearn. And, and she was confident that if we adopt this, it will be good for several years and it's well-supported by the vendor. But also, it has a lot of professional learning community engagement. So it's going to be a lot of supports for the teachers and a lot of collaboration involved in there. So it looks great, I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Do I have any other board reports? All right, I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. On that same note, if anyone has questions or hasn't had a chance to look at that, please hop up there and do that or give Eric Jackson or Dr. Rebein a, a call and, and address some of your concerns or questions. Or just let them know where you are with all of this. So I'm, I'm looking forward to a lot of staff in the district looking at that and really, really giving them a lot of feedback and, and a lot of participation in, in where, in assessing that program and addressing any questions or concerns. So you don't know until you feel you ask, so please make that happen. We also have an opportunity coming up for our board for, the National School Boards Association has a conference. It will be virtual this year. And I just wanted to visit a little bit about that. So planting the seed, I think it's February the 19th. Is that correct, Darlene, that we need to get our, our vote in on what we're going to do, whether or not we decide to go? It is $600 a person. I'm happy to talk to our new board members about this and you've probably got the email consider, concerning the National School Boards Association Conference. So since it is all virtual this year, it's really kind of a bargain because it's $600 a person or it maxes out at nine people for $3,600. So Marguerite or anyone that's been there, would you like to address that a little bit about what we, what we do at the national conference?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well, and I, I've been to three and, and I, you know, the, the conference last spring, since the COVID hit, we got a lot of warning, just got canceled flat out. And so the ones I've gone to in Philadelphia, on sites in San Antonio, on various situations, I can speak about that. And they, they were extremely helpful. There's, there are tons of things to look at, a variety of sessions to attend that can, you know, address your own particular interest or your own particular need of the board that you perceive. And the professional development, the information you learn, not only from the presenters, but also from the materials that they provide online and from the other trustees from around the nation. Is truly, you really grow professionally, I would have to say. It's not just, you know, a trip to Philadelphia, although Philadelphia was a fun trip. But they, you know, there's just a lot of learning that really enhances your boardsmanship and there's a lot of tools you come back that you share. And there are things involving, you know, again, communicating with the public, relationship with superintendent, social, emotional learning, math, and English, a lot of music. Sessions on, on music and how that fits into your curriculum, into a district. So, and it just, it just packed, it's three days that are just packed. So I recommend if anyone who wants, who wants to do that, it, even, even seasoned board members always find something good to, to bring home from that. It's, it's a professional development. I think as trustees, we, we are invested in improvement. And I would, I would just suggest, if you can, I, again, I haven't done it virtually yet, but I'll go ahead and endorsement anyway, endorse it because the in-person was good.
Mr. Ball?
Yeah, I've attended seven of them and I would highly recommend it. We're gonna miss some of the things. They're not gonna have as many breakout sessions as usual this year because of the virtual ones. Way to try to arrange that, but they are gonna have some of those. But they've always had super top-notch guest speakers, the keynote speakers, and those are actually worth, with tuning into. And they also start each day with a musical performance from some group from around the country. We've actually had Wyoming represented there a couple of years ago. So those are, those are also very good opportunities to listen to the music to start off the day. It's, I recommend it to everybody.
In that regard, Chairman, I'll just, we'll have to add one thing that Mr. Bowlin and I have, when we go, we tend to really take advantage of the visitation to various districts and programs and stuff. And so that will be missed because that has been some of the best. But I'm confident in another couple of years, perhaps, will we get, be able to, able to get back to that.
Yes, trustee meters.
Madam Chair, so I, I had the opportunity to attend the conference in Philadelphia. And I think the most, at that time, I was a new board member and they had, they do have sessions for new board members. I found them to be very valuable. And so I would encourage you, if you happen to attend the virtual one this year, to take advantage of that. I'm sure they will have sessions for new board members. And then just the opportunity that I'm gonna miss interacting with individual board members from different states. It's just terrific to network with people and find out what's going on in other, in other states and what individual board member experiences are. And, and I think it's a great opportunity to save the district some money and I could, it sounds really good. You know, $600 or $800, whatever it is, is a, is a bargain compared to what it costs to go there in person. So I look forward to the opportunity and I think I'll do it. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments to be made about participating in that? It looks like, just as a consensus, are we, are, to get a consensus tonight, are we looking at, at doing that? Okay, yes. Mrs. Clausen, are you?
I don't know.
Yes?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, that's fine. We can decide that a little bit down the road. I had some vegetarian concerns on this. I shared a little bit of this with, with, it's $600, it's definitely a bargain. But if, if it's something, it's something I really want to do, so if there's some, I'm gonna go ahead and, and pay that and, and out of my own money and, and just reimburse the district for that because I think it's important. And I have, I can, I don't have a problem doing that, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. If there's another board member that's kind of on the fence because of that, you know, feel free. But I fully support going. I fully support the district taking care of this. This was just more of my own personal place where I am right now. So I appreciate everyone and I'll let Darlene go ahead and give out the, get the rest of the information here. And Mrs. Clausen, if you'll let Darling know where you are on all of that, that would be great. So I'll let all my colleagues follow up with that. So moving on, and no other communications from the board? No? All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is reports from the superintendent and staff.
Yes, Madam Chair, we've got a few and then I've got a couple of extras that I'm gonna throw in under miscellaneous. If I could have Amy Castle come up, she's gonna talk a little bit about some more curriculum that we're gonna have on a 45-day review.
Madam Chair, Dr. Brown, members of the board, I'd like to request permission to have a 45-day review for our honors Algebra One and our honors Geometry Curriculum. The books will be on display at the public library as well as room 352 in admin. Any questions?
Thank you. Was that 352, excuse?
Go ahead.
Okay.
352?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So these curriculum materials are gonna be different than the regular ones for Algebra and Geometry?
Madam Chair, trustee Bowlin, our team has selected three to put on review. Two of them are different than the one we have. They've selected a lustrous of mathematics from McGraw-Hill and big ideas mathematics from Sengage. And the current adoption as well for our regular Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II envisioned by Savis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Castle, appreciate all your work.
I'm next. I would ask Dr. Kenny, Patty Parities, and Michelle Proctor to come up. We'll talk a little bit about diversity and our Title IX update. As you guys are aware, the federal Title IX guidelines changed quite a bit at the beginning of the school year this year. I just wanted to give you an update. We are one of the leaders in the state, very fortunate to have Kelly Pearson, who is a partner in our law firm, is leading some of that and they're doing some of that for other districts right now. But I think we've been on top of it from the start. So if that'll turn it over to Dr. Kenny.
Thank you. Madam Chairman and trustees, I'll have with me tonight Patty Parities and Michelle Proctor. I know they've presented before some of the sudden changes that we are implementing throughout the district regarding Title IX. Michelle Proctor serves as our Title IX Coordinator for the district and also Program Administrator in Human Resources. Patty Parities is serving as our district diversity facilitator and coach and deputy Title IX Coordinator. IX Coordinator. Their worlds cross a lot, where Michelle may focus far more in the human resources side, that the adult side, where Patty Parades really focuses a little bit more on the student side. And so since their worlds have crossed so much in investigative processes and so forth, they both received some certification in Title IX Coordination Administration throughout the summer and have collaborated a lot with our legal counsel, Kelly Pearson, working very hard in our personnel policies and also student policies, as well as student handbooks and everything updating to the Title IX regulations. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to both Michelle Proctor and Patty Parades to update you on progress in that development.
Good evening, Dr. Brown, Madam Chair and Board of Trustees. As Dr. Kenny stated, Patty and I are here to give you an update on the Department of Education's updates and final rule for Title IX. We have about 10 minutes of slides, and we did leave questions, room for questions at the end. The Department of Education did pass their final rule of Title IX back in the spring of 2020, and it went into effect August 14th of 2020. Patty and I are gonna share some of the key changes in the regulations and how they're coming to life in our school district.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry.
I can ban for you if you need.
I've got ban right here. So this slide here is giving you the definition of Title IX, and Title IX is discrimination, harassment, on the basis of sex. So you can see this, these are potential incidents or issues covered under Title IX. I think a lot of times when we think of Title IX or we hear Title IX, sometimes I think what comes to mind is sexual discrimination or sexual harassment. Those are kind of the first things that come to mind. This is a slide just to show you that there are a lot of other things that fall under Title IX, athletics being one of them. And sometimes we don't think about Title IX and athletics and the idea around programming, equity in programming, and even access to sports. So there we have that. So this identifies the key changes to Title IX. Michelle and I are just gonna go through a few of them. We're not gonna go through every single one of them. But as you see, number one, all employees are mandatory reporters. What typically happened in previous years is principals, teachers, school designees or designees in offices, supervisors, were deemed as the mandatory reporters. Now that the law has changed and the definition of it is the fact that we all are mandatory reporters. And so paraprofessionals, secretaries, custodial staff, our cafeteria workers, frankly, everyone who works in our school district is considered a mandatory reporter and must report when they hear or when they see something that they believe may fall under Title IX. And they're not there to make the judgment about it, but if they hear or see something that's not right, they should be reporting it to their immediate supervisor, to their principal, or to our Title IX Coordinator, which is Michelle. And when Michelle's not available, I'm the deputy, it comes to me. So number two on the changes here is the update on the definition of sexual harassment. So there are three points that fall under the definition. The first one is quid pro quo, and there has been no change in that. That is continuing. That's one of the points. The second point is on sexual assault that falls under the definition. The definition of sexual assault has been expanded to include dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. The last point or change under Title IX, yes, under sexual harassment, I'm sorry, is unwelcome conduct that a reasonable person would determine to be so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive. Previously, the language used was the word "or", and it's now "and", which means when determining whether it is, it falls under sexual harassment, we need to determine, is it severe and pervasive and objectively offensive? It has to meet all three.
I'd like to point out number four, required accessible reporting. So one of the new requirements is being able to have the contact information for the Title IX Coordinator easily accessible and ways to file formal complaints. So it is in all handbooks. It's on our district website. It's on applications for employment, so it's available in multiple places. Also on our website, you'll find our complaint form, what the process looks like. So it goes through step-by-step. If you file a formal complaint, what will happen? It'll have contact information for local law enforcement as well. We just wanted to make sure that this information and forms are easily accessible and meets the Department of Education standards.
So a few changes to due process. We are expected to provide supportive measures to all parties. That includes the claimant and the respondent. All parties are considered innocent until a determination is made. So there is no disciplinary action can be taken against the respondent. That's a change. All parties can present evidence, witnesses, and they can have an advisor of their choice throughout the investigation. So those are some major changes under that. Appeals. Both parties can appeal, and there are three things that would have to raise to the level of an appeal. One, they would have to prove that there was a procedural irregularity, meaning we did something wrong. We didn't follow a step. We didn't follow a timeline. Secondly, new evidence that was not reasonably available at the time that a determination was made. So something came up afterwards, and they wanted to appeal and show their evidence. And lastly, the Title IX Coordinator, investigator, or the decision maker had a conflict of interest or a bias. And so the idea that a person doesn't agree with the determination or the outcome, that is not a basis for an appeal, just the three previous points.
One of the other key changes to the regulations is regarding jurisdiction and the definition of an education program or activity. And this really asks the question, does the school district have substantial control over the respondent or the alleged perpetrator and the context in which the harassment occurs? Some things to think about would be, did it happen on school premises, on a school bus or other related vehicle, at a school bus stop, an activity or event sponsored by a school, whether or not it's held on school premises, and any other program or function where the school is responsible for the students. There are also new training requirements under the final rule. So the, all members of the Title IX team must be trained, specifically the Title IX coordinators. So Patty and I both received 32 hours of training this last summer through the Association of Title IX Administrators. All of our investigators have to be trained, and we identified 18 administrators and specialized personnel trained by the Title IX coordinators and our legal counsel, and then the decision makers. So Patty and Chris Zimny were trained for 16 hours under decision-making training, also through a TICSE. The next couple of slides go over a few forms and flow charts we put in place to help us make sure that we're following the new process. This one specifically is a high-level overview. This is what we call our flow chart for a formal complaint. This will over, this is an overview of the process for the Title IX Coordinator, investigators, and also the decision makers. All of our principals and supervisors have been provided this flow chart, and our investigators during their training also received another copy of this as well. This is the checklist for the complainant interview. It's used to ensure all required information is covered during the interview with the complainant. So it's the person reporting. It goes over specific information and definitions that need to be provided to them, and so this helps the investigator ensure that they're covering all of those topics. This next checklist is the investigation checklist. This is a high-level overview for the investigator of what the process looks like and the requirements. It goes through step-by-step what's required in policy, but then it also talks about timeframes. So there's 10 days for a decision to be made, 10 days for appeal. That way it helps track for the investigator where we're at in that process. This last form is the Title IX Coordinator checklist. This is a high-level overview for me as the Title IX Coordinator. Essentially, I serve as the quarterback of the investigation. So are we following due process? Are we following policy? Are we meeting the expectations that the Department of Education has put out there? And this allows me to track and document what the process looks like to ensure that we don't have a procedural irregularity in the process. We also have another form. I don't have a slide for it, but it's a bias questionnaire. We worked with Kelly Pearson on that as well, to ensure we're asking every person in the Title XIX that's assigned to a case to go over it and ensure, do you know of any bias? Or do you know someone, or is there a conflict of interest with parties involved before we assign someone to a case? So we're trying to put things in place ahead of time to ensure we don't have one of those needs for appeals that we could have prevented. That's all we have for you on slides. Thank you for your time. We do have time for questions if you guys have them as well.
Very good. Trustee Weiderstein?
Madam Chair, thank you. So, well, that was interesting. I just have a couple of questions. So who are the investigators? Can these, this may be a principal or a social worker or some, they have a different role, of course. They've been trained to investigate, correct?
Correct. We have 18 trained investigators. That includes principals from every triad, all secondary school principals, as well as we have a school psychologist. Chris Zimny is on there as well. So we tried to make sure that we had a wide variety of people from different backgrounds as well.
And can I ask who provides the training?
The training was provided by Patty, myself, and Kelly Pearson for this round of training for this first time.
So just one final question. So my experience in human resources has told me that, you know, one of the biggest problems is people not reporting. So let's say you become aware of someone who has knowledge of violation of Title IX, and they have not reported it. Somebody else indicated that ended up reporting, and what are the consequences for someone not reporting?
I would say that would go through a policy violation potentially for not mandatory reporting. We'd have to kind of work through that process. But there would be follow-up if it came to light that someone knew and had not reported. There'd have to be an investigation into that as well.
And what would that look like?
It would look, I would take that personally from an HR perspective. I work with John Weigel on what does that investigation in those interviews look like if it's separate from the actual incident, unless it's related to the incident. That might get pulled into the investigative process with the investigator if that person had a part in the potential claim, and that's why they didn't come forward.
So potentially, there could be disciplinary action taken against the individual. Is that correct or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ball?
I didn't have a question, just a comment. Mr. Wilson said that this was being discussed in Subcommittee Number Three, which involves students, because it's a fine student. It's also been discussed in Subcommittee Two, because it involves personnel. So I just want to mention that they pretty much mirror each other in both places.
Very good. Trustee Clausen?
I was just wondering, Madam Chair, are we gonna hear about the diversity training, too? I thought that was part of the presentation.
Excuse me, Trustee Clausen. After the Title IX presentation, I will then do a presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Herman?
Madam Chairman, thank you. And so I was, actually, the question about mandatory reporting came to mind that you may get, it may come to the attention of the district because of a parent complaint or something like that, a non-employee, you know, a friend. So does everybody know how to lodge a complaint and with whom to lodge it, and you've got that great timeline so that they know when they'll be hearing from whom? So I just wonder, what efforts are we making to let the public or the student, him or herself, know?
So all the information for reporting a claim, contact information, including physical address, email address, and phone number for the Title IX Coordinator is all available on our website. So if you go to staff or students, there's a link both for sexual harassment and discrimination. You can go there. It will be, it's in our administrative regulation that we're working on in the policy subcommittees. And it's also available in all the employee handbooks, student handbooks, and on frontline for applicants for employment as well.
Madam Chairman, just, it strikes me, this might be something for the parent advisory committee, just to know, because, you know, a lot of redundancy is good. Nevertheless, to know to look, to know that it's there would be something that maybe parents should know.
You can talk to Scott Archer about that, a possible presentation. They set their own agenda, but we're happy to put that out to Mr. Archer with the parent advisory committee. Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? No, thank you.
I'd like to add one other thing, though, also, is if we do get contacted by a parent, it is my responsibility as the Title IX Coordinator to reach out, even if it's a principal that calls me, to reach out to that parent regarding that potential claim, talk to them about Title IX, provide them my information, what my role is and what the process looks like, and provide them with a complaint form if they want to file a formal complaint. So there is, I do touch base with every single parent that I get contacted about for a student.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for all that work. I know it was tedious, and that's been something that's been in front of that committee. I've been on that committee a long time. So Kelly Pearson has worked with the district and Dr. Kenny, and we've looked at that many, many times in a lot of different ways. So I'm glad. Very nice.
And the feds keep changing it.
Yes, they do. So we're on our toes, and I'm glad you're ahead of it. So thank you so much.
I would also just share with you that I think we're pretty fortunate in our district to have two of us.
Yes.
It is a lonely job. And so to have two of us has really paid off, really, for both of us to, as we're learning this, to get confident and feel like we're making the right decisions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So I'd just like to give the board updates on my work that I've been doing. I haven't seen you for quite a while, and so here I am. So what have I been doing so far? A little bit on diversity. In the fall, in August, I presented Diversity Professional Development to the entire transportation team, did that in person. We had about 70 people in the morning, 70 people in the afternoon. Transportation Department, they were wonderful, set up the bus barn for me, took all the buses out, had it all set up, went all the doors up for air. Everybody wore masks. They were great. They were great. So the leaders in transportation really wanted the training in person versus online, and I still agree with them. I believe diversity training is just, it's better when we can do it in person. I presented in October at the MYAFA conference, and I would tell you that that is the first time I've attended. My topic was, what does it mean to be anti-racist? And so I presented. I encourage all of us to attend in the future. It was a great learning opportunity for me as a learner, but also a great way for me to build some bridges with our community members. And so I would encourage you and invite you every October, second Saturday of the month. I also coordinate and meet monthly with the Cultural Diversity Panel, Advisory Panel. There's about 20 people on the panel. They were selected last year. It's a It's about 50% staff, 50% community. And last year, I met every month with the large group, about 20 people. I also asked for feedback in the spring. Of course, we were remote starting in March, so we were meeting online. But I sent them an online survey just to give me feedback on how they felt the year went and what could be better. And really what I heard from them was 20 was a lot of people to try to feel like we were making movement or to make decisions. And so I have a relationship with the Diversity and Equity Chief Diversity Officer at UW. And so I met with her over the summer. And I just talked to her about how does she run her committee? She's got a team of 36. So I said, oh, gosh, I better not be complaining about my team of 20. Really, and so what I decided to do and working with Dr. Kenny was I actually created subcommittees. So I have four subcommittees on the Cultural Diversity Advisory Panel this year. And those, those subcommittees are programs, policies, professional development, and community engagement. I have a team lead from the Cultural Diversity Panel that was on it last year, who's the facilitator, one person for each of those. I meet with those team leads every month. Meet with the larger group two or three times during the year, during the school year. Feedback I've gotten from the team leads and from their, and I meet with them monthly and feedback I get from them and their notes and their minutes from their meetings is so much nicer to have a small group, right? It's three to five people on a team. And they really can dig into the work and start asking some hard questions about what should we be doing, what are we doing, what can we do in terms of programs, policies, professional development, and community engagement? So we're just in the thick of it right now with that. I shared with you, I have a relationship with Dr. Emily Minago, who is the Chief Diversity Officer at UW. And I also participate on their Community Engagement Panel. So I meet twice a month with their team as a community member here from Cheyenne. It's been a good opportunity for me to get to know some of the people over in Larry, Albany County, from the college as well as from the school district. So I participate on that. Hoping, I'm working with Dr. Kenny. I'm hoping to put out a student climate survey in April. That was something that was part of the action plan from last year. And we're working with WIAAC. And WIAAC is the Western Educational Equity Assistance Center out of Metropolitan State University. They're the organization that supported us last year with training of all our certified staff members. Dr. Darlene Sampson, who I had a previous relationship, I knew her from Denver Public Schools, has been a great support to me. They have, WIAAC has given the student climate survey throughout the country for many years. So they have data from across the country. They give it in grades three, grades three through 12. We have not made that decision yet. But I'm really encouraging us to use the survey as it stands, to not make any changes to it, because the minute we make changes to it, the data they have from the surveys they've given across the country becomes invalid. And so working on that, we're hoping to send that out electronically in April. And parents would have the option to opt out. They don't have to take it. They don't have to let their students take it. The other thing I've been doing is I respond to school outreach. So I have principals, assistant principals. I've had teachers reach out to me as a support and a resource. And I'm starting to work on, I created diversity modules last spring because we were remote and I couldn't do anything in person. So I created them online. Sorry if I turned that on.
I'll take care of it, thank you.
And so I'm starting with.
You did not turn that on. It's not on the screen. I'm getting ready for the next.
You're good. Sorry for the interruption.
No worries, no worries. So I'm starting on diversity modules 2.0. So I'm open to questions.
Very good. Trustee Bola.
Are you planning on giving the climate survey to the entire district or just to McCormick?
The entire district.
So you're past working with just McCormick at this point, working with the entire district then?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee leaders one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to help me understand. So if I were to attend a diversity training session that you would conduct, let's say in the transportation department, what kinds of topics would you cover? Just as a general matter.
You bet, you bet. So the topics I covered are the topics I've covered in the diversity modules that I created, which I believe were sent to all of you. And I'll make sure our new board members receive it. Thank you, Margery. So microaggressions, cultural competence and what that means, and bias. That was really what I spent my time on in first year. Does that help?
That does help, thank you.
You bet.
Very good. Trustee Ashby.
So as a new board member, I missed when you came on board. So could you just articulate for us or for me? What are the, what are the key goals of your position? What are you, what are you, what are you mainly trying to accomplish?
You bet, you bet. So I came on August 21st of 2019. Wait, is that right?
Yeah.
2019, that was my first day on the job. And that was my, and our first day with WIAAC providing diversity training for, and equity training for all of our staff. So about the first three or four months I was here, I was housed at McCormick Junior High. And I was there as a support to the staff, not so much students, but to the staff. And I worked a lot with the principal, assistant principals, and working with staff. So I spent my time almost till Thanksgiving there and transitioned to the ad building. So I've been at the ad building since, although right now I'm at East Ridge Facility, also supporting CVS. And so in terms of my goals, you know, our goals are really that we provide and build an equitable system for all of our kids and really for all of our staff, regardless of what you look like, where you come from, what language you speak, and that everyone's welcome here. Everyone's educated here. And so when you walk through our doors, nothing else matters but providing you the absolute best education we can possibly provide for you. And so my job really is with the adults in our system in terms of providing resources, providing professional development, working with them on problem solving. I've worked with school administrators really kind of talking through incidents that have happened in their school. And so how, you know, how should we handle this? And we've got an irate parent or upset parent. I talk to those parents, I have conversations with them. And so I think, I would just say that my big goal is that we have an equitable environment for all.
Thank you. Trustee Clausen.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the update. I was hoping that we'd hear from you because I do have a question. And it's, it's a, it's related to kind of the environment of our country and talking about some of these issues.
Yes.
So I appreciate that you and we as a district are promoting equal opportunity and fair treatment of all people in our district. That's really an important goal. And having said that, some are promoting the idea that America is irrevocally racist and sexist. And that they argue that entire groups based on race and sex are oppressors and that racial and sexual identities are more important than our common status as human beings and even as individuals. So I think that it's important that we acknowledge that there's not universal acceptance of that notion and that we're very careful as a district to, to recognize that people have reasonable disagreement over the merits of those arguments. So I'm hopeful as a district that we're very careful how we are framing these issues. And I'm interested in what resources we're using to talk about these issues or to refer people to them, to learn more on the issues. Because we do serve such a diverse community, we need to be careful that we're not taking one side or the other. So my questions for you are what efforts have you made to ensure balance of views when discussing these issues and training on these issues that are so sensitive? That's question one. And then do you, do any of the resources that you use or maybe reference or send people to look up books, online resources, websites? Are any of them that you're using include the idea of critical race theory, which I touched on earlier in my comments?
Thank you. So a little bit about ensuring balance. Really important to me. Really important to our school district and the fact that we live in Cheyenne, Wyoming, in this beautiful state. And we have lots of diversity of thought, which we should welcome. And so when I present, I do, for example, when I talk about microaggressions, I did get some feedback at the transportation training in August that they were offended that I presumed that when people say something, that it's taken the wrong way. And so we had a great conversation about it. And I said to them, I appreciate that you're willing to confront me on something that is bothering you. So I would just say to you that I do believe in balance. I do believe in giving as much, the idea that all of our kids here are sacred to all of us. And there is no student or family that comes through our doors that should be fearful, that should be worried about being hurt, harassed, not educated. And so that's really the point I come from. We're a public institution and we have a responsibility to all. And that's not easy to do. It's not, and you can see that across the nation in public education. It's not easy to do. And so I try my best. I don't insert my personal opinions, my personal values, because that is not part of my job. My job is, is to present as much information that I have and that I've learned through this new task of mine to presenting a balanced view. I'm not going to make assumptions about who, who people are in my audience because I don't know them well enough. And so I would never do that. So I would tell you that I got really positive feedback from the transportation department because we had a hard conversation about white privilege. And I had some members in the, in the community there upset because they felt like white men are under attack. And we had a great conversation about it. And I feel really good they were able to bring it up. And we, Justin from the transportation department and I had a great honest conversation with the entire group about it. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I just come from a, I hope, I believe I come from a place of balance. In terms of resources, I will tell you, I have been very limited in what I have shared with people. I did create the modules. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them. A lot of what's in the modules, I took from resources from Denver Public Schools, resources from WIAAC, resources from UW, resources from some training that I've been to. So it's not like there's any one particular resource that I go to. I just try to be open about what I'm presenting to people and just what the definitions are and what it means and go from there. But I have been careful about what I share with people. I really have not shared anything outside of the modules. When, I did have a teacher that called me. I shared an article about the use of the N-word and I shared an article with her about that. Just kindergarten, wanting to know, how can I talk to my little five-year-olds about this? Very different than talking to 15-year-olds about it. So I don't know if that helps.
Thank you.
You bet.
Very good. Trustee leaders one.
Madam Chair, thank you. So, you know, this whole issue of diversity, and I think, you know, I've read a lot on the topic. I'm certainly no expert in the area, but it seems to come down to the fact that we ought to be celebrating our diversity.
Absolutely.
And I think that's what, I think we don't say that enough to our students because really, that's where we get our strength, I think, as a district, as a state, as a country. Wouldn't it be a boring world if everybody was the same? You know, it's almost, it just sounds like a bad movie, really. But, but if we could just celebrate our diversity and people would be happy with that. And we're not going to agree always, and we certainly shouldn't always agree. But celebrating diversity, for me, that's, that's really what it's all about. It means different things to different people. But for me, it means just celebrating our differences and respecting those differences. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And just responding real briefly to Ms. Clausen's concerns that she brought forward. I did take that module. And, and I have to say that it did focus on just looking at attitudes that drove behavior. And really, it was about behavior, not the fact that you were coming from a certain class or color or whatever. It was very, it was very clear that regardless of any of the demographic information about you, it was, it was about activities and treatment of others. And, 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 you know, asking some hard questions about looking at why, why you were thinking certain ways. But it was, it was, it was on demonstration of it. So I think, I think it did a good job in that respect, just, you know, to keep clear of making assumptions about people, which, you know, is always dangerous. Thank you.
Very good. Any other question? Yes. Trustee Smith.
Thank you. Just to clarify about the student climate survey.
Yes.
You said that would go to parents, or it will be sent to parents electronically?
Permission to take the survey would go to all families.
And then it will go directly to the students if they have permission?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Very good. Oh, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you so much for your time.
We'll have John Weigel come up next and talk a little bit about the people that have taken the, have taken the health incentive. The Health, Health and Retirement Incentive. John.
All right. Dr. Brown, Madam Chair, School Board Trustees, you all have a handout that you can take some notes on if you choose to, along with what's presented on the screen. I wanted to share some information with you in terms of the numbers. The deadline was Friday, January 8th, to turn in to the district that we had staff members who wanted to take advantage of the health insurance incentive. So from Friday's numbers, we had 76 total staff members who wanted to take advantage of that. We broke that down by certified staff. As you can see, we had 51 certified staff and 20 of those were secondary, 23 were elementary. In terms of classified staff, we had 17 classified staff, three at the secondary level, seven at the elementary, and then seven other areas. And I'll talk a little bit about that. And then in terms of administrators and supervisors, we had eight turn in that request. We had two school administrators, four coordinators. We had two school administrators, four coordinators, and two other supervisors at the classified level. So that gives you kind of the numbers. Remember, this is hot off the press from Friday. We didn't have a lot of time to work through it. I don't see us going down from seventy-six, but we put house and people that don't qualify. Maybe they thought they met the rule of eighty-five and they didn't. There's some work to be done between now and March first. And March, uh March first is the time they can rescind their retirement requests, just so you're aware of that. And I think I will update, I think, uh each month to say where we're at with that number. But just do do remember, there's, these are pretty tentative at the time. So looking within those numbers, uh if we look at the certified staff, out of the fifty-one certified members, nine are funded out of special education. Okay? And one of those staff members is funded out of our Title IV funds. So really, we have about forty-one FTEs in terms of general funds when we're looking at reductions and budget reasons. Those, that's the number we have to consider because, of course, special education is funded at a hundred percent. And then Title IV also doesn't hit our general fund. So really, we have about forty-one certified staff members that we can look at in terms of some of our reductions uh moving forward. In terms of the classified staff, uh out of the other area box containing seven staff, uh four work out of the admin building, two from transportation, and one from facilities. Uh in addition to, in the very last uh part of this document that I showed you, we do have staff that have already notified us they're resigning, but they might not qualify for the incentive. So we do have nine other staff members. So I think along with the number of staff who are looking at this incentive, we also have to keep in line how many other people have resigned to our district because that'll affect some of the decisions we make kind of moving forward. So uh like I said, hot off the press, this is just some documents that we wanted to share in numbers, so you have an idea about that. It will impact Jed and the budget, some of the decisions we have to make in terms of reductions of staff. Some staff, I'm sure some of these positions we might have to replace. Other ones, we might be able to collapse and save money in terms of that personnel area. So pretty short and sweet, just to give you a heads up. That's kind of where we're at.
All right, trustee Ashby.
Can can I get some context, Madam Chair? What it, what is the incentive and what are we incentivizing and?
I apologize. Which one of you would like to take that? Jed or?
I'll let John.
Yeah, so if you remember, there are certain criteria. If you work in the district for over ten years and you meet the rule of eighty-five, you could qualify to pay you up to five hundred sixty-five dollars toward your health insurance up to the age of sixty-five. You can't go more than ten years with that incentive. If you want to have a family, a family membership, it still only goes to five sixty-five. You'd have to pay the difference, and that's about twenty-two hundred dollars for a family membership. So they would get the incentive from the school district, that's five sixty-five. They'd pay the difference of that of that total. So it is an incentive um for staff members to to have some health insurance. Uh it helps us because sometimes we replace that staff member of a high salary with someone of the lower salary. Uh this year coming up, I think it's going to help us because we're going to have high salaries and maybe not replace those folks in terms of our our budget reductions. Uh if you've worked with us for for twenty years and meet the rule of eighty-five, that also is a way you could qualify for this incentive. This part lives within the policy number two subcommittee. Uh we are looking at modifying that just a little bit in terms of the board. Every year has the opportunity to to approve this. We've approved it for about twenty-five years. This year, we're, we we approved it. So this is the number I'm talking about. Next year, it's been put on hold, so it won't be available to staff the following year. Between now and then, we are going to work on the policy. We do see maybe reducing some of those areas. Uh Doc, uh Mr. Siccarelli did some studies and out of three years, one year we save money, one year it's kind of equal, and another year it kind of costs us money. Um so we're reviewing that as a policy. But it's a great benefit to our staff who have met those requirements that are struggling because they're worried about insurance. They have the, actually have that up to age sixty-five.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It looks like I, I'm going to start down at that end if you don't mind.
Just real briefly, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just wondering, um do you think the um the specter of not, you know, if you wait a year, you're going to go get into that gap that we put into place, the the um suspension of the program. So so do you think this is kind of not artificially high, but kind of in a way because people who might have been planning to retire next year are doing it this year?
I think they're worried about the program in general.
Yes.
I think because it was paused the following year, it forced people to make a decision. Um it's hard to estimate how many people polled rescind, you know, their their name from this. But I think a lot of people felt like it's going to be paused next year, might go away forever. I'm going to take advantage of it now. Uh that's what I've heard from several employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Do you have a breakdown on the nine that um we're not taking this on where they're from?
I would be one of those, yeah.
Yeah, so I do have that. I do have that for you. So we have three secondary certified staff, one elementary certified staff, one ROTC person, two special services, one superintendent, and one paraprofessional. A partridge in a pear tree.
Trustee Classic.
I just have a quick question. How do these numbers compare to, like, say, last year's numbers?
I think these are higher than last year, I believe.
By a lot or?
Quite a bit. Jed, you know, he might, Jed might have that in terms of some of the financial piece, so. I don't have that off the top of my head, sorry.
Madam Chair, um uh Mr. Wygo is correct. This was a significantly higher than the year than we've seen in recent uh history. Uh last year was uh about twenty-three individuals took advantage of the uh option. Before that, there was another low twenty count. Uh we haven't seen um retirees take advantage of the health incentive, or excuse me, the retirement incentive uh at this level since the additional uh separation paid uh around two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And even at that point, it was about fifty to sixty individuals.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Siccarelli. Any further questions? No, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wygo.
Thank you, Mr. Wygo. Uh Madam Chair, next, um just want to give you a little update um on some of the things that are happening out in our lives for COVID. We had a great start after Christmas. Uh we had four staff members and I think we had about fifteen students that had tested positive. We're not going to be able to return right away, but most of them are going to return fairly quickly. Uh we know that we've got up until probably, well, um probably the end of this week to see if we have a spike or anything. We we are not seeing that right now. The entire county is not seeing that. It it seems like these are kind of tapering off a little bit compared to where they were. Um feel very comfortable with our our staff coming back and following the protocols and us being safe there. We have worked with county health. They have set up times for our staff to get vaccinations. Uh we are one B for all of our staff um to get vaccinations. Um county health has made it fairly easy. They are allowing us to uh sign up um electronically for appointments to get the vaccination for anybody that wants to. It's all voluntary. Nobody's forced to do that. Um and so all they will do is click on a link. We are um sending that information out. I think they sent it out at four o'clock today, so it did go out at four o'clock today. Um we'll get that information to everyone out there and allow them to sign up. Um we're um happy that that's something that's happening. But it, and so the first round will be the week of February eighth for our staff. And then it's a two-part um vaccination, so the second one will be the first week of March. So you will, when you go through and get your first one, you'll have to sign up for your time to come in and get your vaccination the second time. So feel very fortunate that uh we have that opportunity. Um feel very fortunate about our uh partnership that we have with county health. Again, we'll be on the phone with them again this Wednesday, um knocking out details. It it became so much easier whenever they just had an online signup because at one point we were going to have to do a survey and prioritize people, but they decided to go away from that and everything. So uh excited about that. Feel very fortunate about where we're at with the the number of positives right now. And we'll just kind of continue to move forward, and if things change, uh you'll know because you got every one of the uh press releases that we send out. So I'd answer, or try to answer any questions on that if you have them.
Um is there going to be any cost associated? I know the vaccine is supposed to be free, but sometimes there's a um a cost to actually get the vaccination. So since you're going to the health, does that mean we're getting it for free?
Yeah, it it will not cost any of our employees anything. Um we are um looking at, if it does, if there's an administrative charge, if we can charge that back to the CARES Act and if uh our um health insurance would would um build a uh the district or not. And we're not, we have not gotten approval for that yet, but we are working on that approval.
I think that will affect whether they may want to take it a little bit, maybe, with the financials, especially for some of our employees, like.
Yeah, and again, it will not cost employees anything.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. or Dr.?
Uh Dr. Brown, do you have any sense for how many of our employees might be interested in taking the shot as opposed to not taking the shot?
Um, you know, I think there's going to, the the uh out there with people currently being offered the shot, it's somewhere between fifty to eighty percent of the people that they've offered it to in different areas have done that. Um I can tell you that we had a discussion at our cabinet meeting today, and the the first four shots will be to myself, to uh Mr. Wygo, to Dr. Kenny, and to Mr. Bartlett. So we've signed up and said we'll try to role model and be good role models, so we'll get those done. And I know that Mary Quash will have her camera up there. Never, never misses an opportunity to get a photo shoot of people getting stuck with needles, you know, so. No, so we're going to do that, but um I would guess it will probably be somewhere around sixty-five percent of our staff members would want to do that. We are not going to um, uh this is not their only opportunity. I know some people, they want to wait for a little while. And so if that happens, we'll have opportunities for them down the road um to be able to sign up if they chose, so chose. And again, it is voluntary totally. So if people do not want to do that, I mean, there's a lot of reasons why somebody might not want to do that. But I think it makes sure that everybody's as uh safe as they can be.
Very good. Uh trustee Herman has a question.
Madam Chairman, just wondering, didn't the school nurses have all received their first inoculation, right? Haven't they? The nurses have.
So last week, uh they were part of the um one A tier, the people that were getting them. So any nurse that wanted to receive their first um inoculation last week. Um and then I think it's twenty-one days before you can get your second injection. So that's kind of where that's at.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ballin.
I mean, there's a number of different vaccinations, and two of them improved so far. So will they know which one they're going to get? Or will they have a choice?
Yeah, they they know exactly which one they are going to get. I think, I believe it's Pfizer and I'm uh, yep, it's Pfizer. Um they um, well, they they have all that information. For them, it talks about any of the um side effects that you might get. Um, yeah, so we've got a pretty detailed, a piece of information that went out in the email, and I'll make sure that you guys get that as well. But you guys.
We got it, I think.
But did you get it?
Yeah.
I can see. I don't think you guys can sign up on the link.
Trustee Herman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to clarify also, that um once everybody gets their vaccinations, the district is still going to employ the mask distancing cleaning. It that that's going to be going on for quite a while, for the, at least the duration, correct?
Absolutely, until um, you know, um the governor's orders are going to require us to do that until um they're not. Um we do not see that changing for the the current year. Um one of the issues, well, one of the things that we've talked with county health about is that um students will not be vaccinated unless they're sixteen or older, and they don't believe that they will get to um that group until school is out. So it looks like we're probably stuck with most of the protocols that we have in place, at least through the end of this school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. What else do you have?
Uh, Madam Chair, I wanted to give you a little update on um oh, I don't want to do that. On legislature, did receive some information today uh regarding how the legislature might look. So I wanted to pull that up. There we go. Um, it looks like the legislature is going to start out tomorrow, and then um it looks like um they will do all of the uh things that they're required to do for the first meeting. Um they'll elect a leadership, they'll adopt their temporary rules, views, receive the governor's address, and then they're going to assign some bills to to committees. Um it looks like the standing committees meet January nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first to work and report out bills. And I, it sounds like all of this is going to be electronically or virtually done. Uh and then that they will reconvene virtually on uh January twenty-seventh for eight days to consider to the, uh consider around thirty committee bills. And then uh additionally, refer more bills to committee on that eighth day. And then the committees will uh meet again for three days, the week of February twenty-sixth, to work bills that are signed to them. And then it looks like they're going to reconvene the session uh March first, in person if health allows. And then the the session will adjourn on April second. So that was, that is not even on the website. I could not find it there today, but did have uh the opportunity to have somebody mail that to me, and so I thought I would share that with you. I thought Jed did a really nice job of updating us on the recalibration. Um there was a uh education committee meeting um the thirtieth of July, and it did not talk about K-12. It was all pre-K information and was talking about getting all of the pre-K underneath one organization. Apparently, it's under three different organizations at the state level. So they're looking at doing that. So that's kind of a little update on um where we're at with legislature. Any questions on any of that? And then the last thing I want to uh inform you about is I'm going to have um Dave come up and talk a little bit about a little accident that happened over Christmas break and uh and uh inform you on kind of where we're at. I don't think we've come to a resolution on a solution yet, but I'll let Dave talk about that.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, um December twenty-fourth, we had a uh fire suppression sprinkler head uh burst in the in the northern uh storeroom at East High. Uh that caused several thousand gallons of water to uh flood out into the uh the gym floor for about thirty minutes. Um when those those sprinkler heads go off, it does uh send an alarm to our folks. Our staff were on site about thirty minutes after it ruptured. Um did get it shut off, got it cleaned up. Um and now uh we are just in the process of waiting for the floor to dry out. It's probably going to be another five to six weeks before the moisture content's down far enough that we can assess the damage. Um the north half of the floor has has experienced some warping and some cupping, and so uh we've got to keep our eye on that. Um and what that's done is it's pretty much deemed the floor unplayable for basketball. Um great timing, obviously. Um so uh what we've done is we have moved East Varsity and JV over here to Story Gym. Um we've relocated Central Sub-Varsity to um East Ridge. They're they're practicing after um Build-Dyne is done. Uh and to be honest with you, this has actually impacted everybody from the fifth grade on up to the varsity level just because of the, you know, the number of gyms, number of programs, number of teams we have this time of year. So um as I said, we'll we'll wait another four to five weeks before we can make a determination. But I can tell you, our options are going to be one of three. Um if it, if it uh the cupping levels out enough, we may be able to re-sand, uh refinish and paint um the floor. Uh we may have to um tear out um part of that that's been damaged, replace it, then still go back and sand, repaint, refinish the floor. Or we may be in a situation where we're doing a complete replacement. So um our remedies are going to range anywhere from fifty thousand to about two hundred thousand dollars. Um so uh as we move forward, I will keep you guys apprised. Um it does look like, and you know, unfortunately, when you look at um replacing a gym floor, that is a very specialized and thing that that occurs. We have two companies that we we rely on, um that travel around the country. So I can tell you, they've already booked out their summer projects. Um so chances are for the us to get this done in a timely manner, we most likely would be doing the repairs during the school year. Um right now, what I would tell you is East High has, uh they are conducting PE in the south half of the gym. They're just making sure it's not, you know, basketball related. They they can still hit their curriculum marks. Um but if we do determine that we have to do a full replacement, um we may have to look to um just do some some shifting of curriculum or move some folks around, or we can hope for a really warm spring. It's it's unfortunate because I can't even put them in the swimming pool right now, so. But anyway, that's where we are there. Uh I will tell you, I would like to give huge accolades to all of our our other schools out there because uh, you know, we we may compete against one another on the court, but they've all chipped in and helped. They've all adjusted their schedules. They've moved their teams. Uh and they've been very accommodating. So I'm very proud of our A.D.s and and our folks for for being open and willing to do that. Any questions for me?
Yes, Mr. Ballin.
Is this the main gym?
Yes, it's the main gym.
Did the other gym get a gym?
The other gym did not, and that's fortunate because we are able to keep our sub-varsity um teams practicing in in the auxiliary gym there. Um and you know, this this, we're we're still investigating. Hey, we've got the insurance cut. And, you know, this, this, we're, we're still investigating it. We've got the insurance companies, both ours and the, and the pool contractor looking into this. Because we do believe this is related to having the vestibule shut down and, and, you know, cold weather and, and some of that. So we'll, we'll just have to see whose insurance company is going to end up carrying the lion's share of this.
Certainly great that we have both, both facilities, both East Ridge and here, to be able to expand into.
And, and I will tell you, we've also managed to use Cary Junior High, the new gym there. After Cary's out, we have some teams going down there in the evening. So you're right, it's, it's, with, with our new COVID restrictions, with fewer kids on the courts, we've needed more gyms. And then, of course, you lose one of your biggest ones. But the, the fact that we did have East Ridge and, and Story has really helped the remedy.
Well, Rec Mill, did you lose much equipment? And will Rec Mill be involved in possibly looking at some replacement there?
We did not lose any equipment. It's just primarily the floor and, and that would be, as I said, it could be insurance, could be the contractor. And, and ultimately, we, we may do a combination of insurance, contractor insurance, and potentially major maintenance.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Ballin.
Jed's not the only one who brings bad news to us. Madam Chair, that's the end of my reports tonight.
Very good. Moving on to our agenda, we are ready for our consent agenda. So all items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove an item, a motion from the gen, consent agenda? No?
Madam Chair, I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
Second. Any, no, there's no discussion on that, correct? Right, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing that, motion passes. All right. New business, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I move to grant permission to contract for multimedia equipment and supplies for projectors and projector lamps for an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for document cameras, for an additional amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars, and for cables, sound systems, and other miscellaneous audiovisual items for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to our future business. The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, February first, two thousand twenty-one, at six P.M. A work session will begin at five P.M. Meetings are virtual for the public and in-person for our district staff and trustees. Public comment? It's time for our public comment. Do we have anyone show of hands, Dr. Brown? Yes, it looks like Mr. Wilson would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Wilson, if you'll unmute yourself, you can speak.
Thank you. I have four comments or requests or questions relating to the Title IX policy and diversity presentations. First would be a request. The presentation on Title IX, the key changes document that was on, on your screen, and I believe the trustees have in their packets. On that page, number two, Roman numeral two, says that the definition of sexual harassment is to include unwelcome conducts, conduct that a reasonable person would determine is severe, pervasive, and objectionably offensive. Which is great. That's, that should be there. However, the policy that was presented to the committee on September fourteenth was structured so this provision does not apply to all of the subcategories under sexual harassment. In particular, the provision on stalking is not bound by the severe pervasive objectionable requirement as it's written. So I have not been influential to get this readdressed in committee due to the timing and the need for coordination between the other, with the other committee and with legal. And I understand that there is, there is time concerns and that the requirement to have this in place already is, is already passed. But I would request that the board of trustees look at this concern closely and ensure that the final approved policy makes that binding on all cases of sexual harassment. My second point, my second thing is, is another item in regard to the diversity in Title IX presentation. And that would be, I would ask the board to ensure that a mechanism is provided for the public to view the student climate survey questions before parents need to decide whether to opt, opt out. That'll give a lot more confidence to parents if they can look at the survey in advance and see, this is what my child's going to be answering. Number thir, three, that would be a request. And I would say that in regard to the diversity presentation, can the training materials that were mentioned during, during the presentation about microaggression and bias, for example, be posted? As part of the committee, I looked into the training that the Title IX coordinator, the investigators and the like at the higher level, that's posted on the website. But the information that is actually used to train on microaggression, bias, and such that was spoken about at the lectern in, in your meeting, that was not available on the, on the website. And finally, I just have a very general observation, and that is, in my experience, the provisions that these regulations put in place to, to discipline employees or students give extraordinary power to the Title IX decision maker. The expulsion of a student or termination of an employee's career appears to be based on the least rigorous of all the evidentiary standards and the, and a highly subjective reasonableness test. The policy should, you, you, you on the board, put yourself in the shoes of some of these folks who may inadvertently commit a faux pas and, and risk losing their career over it because it gets blown up and the, the decision is solely on the Title IX decision makers' head to make that decision. It's one person making that decision. And the appeal, as it's, as the policy is written right now, does not allow any appeal because of an understanding that the reasonable person finding is, is not appropriate. So, so this is, is one person making this decision. I know there's a, a lot of good folks there on the, on the, on the board, and I would just ask you to take a, a closer look at that issue. One, one possibility is, is under the federal rules. You are allowed to, instead of having the, the legal standard of a, let's see here. I think right now, it's, I think right now, the definition in the training slides that are posted on the website say that it's fifty percent likely plus a feather would find a person guilty of the charge.
And Mr. Wilson, you're getting close to the end of your time. Sic, could you wrap it up? And we do have to follow the federal regulations as well.
Yes.
Right, the federal regulations allow you to make that decision, whether it's a clear convincing standard, or I believe it's substantial evidentiary standard. That would be my last point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have no hand, Lynn Story Hyler. Lynn, if you unmute yourself, I think you can talk.
Welcome. Madam Chairman, to the board, I'm Madam Chair. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you, thank you. My comments are also relating to the Title IX changes. I just want to make sure that there is an understanding that the new changes to the sexual assault really impact more on the college and university levels. So I also want it to be known that I hope you have a policy that, that dictates how those infractions will be handled, because all of those are crimes and they are handled very specifically by law enforcement and should not be being investigated by the district. And so I hope in the policy, it talks about how those are directly referred to law enforcement, because anything relating to sexual assault of a minor or a child is a crime. So I, those are just some general comments that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hyler.
No one else has their hands up, ma'am?
Very good. Thank you for that public comment. I appreciate that. And it's good that we have that opportunity twice in our, our board meeting. So our next item on the agenda is executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session at this time prior to adjournment for the purpose of possible student long-term suspension, expulsion, and personnel.
Second. Thank you. We don't have to vote on this, do we? It's not, or do we?
We do, we both go in executive.
Okay, very good. So thank you. All in favor to go into executive session. Thank you.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Sorry about that.